I have been so busy prepping for my standup comedy grad show tomorrow that I don't know even how to start this show, but here we go.
I cannot wait. You have five minutes. You have a five minute set.
Of material, yes. And I have been like really, really practicing and I'm super nervous. I don't know if I've been this nervous in the last like 10 years to do something. So I'm nervous.
Is there, can you give any details on like what your material is?
Um, what I can tell you is that I think it's funniest because every story that I tell actually happened. And I
So that's your brand as a comedian. It's a storyteller. Okay.
There is no, like, all of the premises are 100% things that actually happened.
You're a good storyteller, too.
We'll see. Finding punchlines is actually really, really hard. It really is. Like, I think having attended open mics since I started the class, it's been really interesting to watch people have something that in their head was funny or a funny premise, but not realize that they needed to put together a punchline to get people to laugh. So it's like all of this buildup, but then you don't actually get the like release that is like, I want to laugh now. And so I've, I've realized that's the really hard part.
Have you ever been to the Capital Punishment Show?
I have not.
So we just, I just went, uh, two weeks ago now, um, guy, guy who runs it, his name's Damian Harmony. He's also a teacher, uh, at uh, JSK High School. And, um, funny enough, uh, we've been friends for, for years. And when I started dating Sam, he, he messaged me, he's like, are you dating Sam Rice? And I'm like, yeah. And he's like, he was my student. I feel old. So I, we ended up going and we both watched him do it. And that is such a cool thing. And I can't, I don't understand how they can go up there and do that. Just like think of puns on the spot.
Yeah. So, so for folks who don't know, Capital Punishment is a pun battle amongst comedians, I think, right? Uh, and it takes place, is it monthly? Um, and I think it's at Luna's, right?
It's at Luna's. Yeah.
Yeah. Luna's is a classic, classic, um, kind of a, it's like one of the, the secret comedy spots, like they do an open mic. It's like comedy for comedians. Um, it's a, it's a really cool spot. Now I feel a little bad because I'm letting the secret out, but, um, Luna's does some
To get there early because you're not going to get a seat otherwise.
Yeah.
Because there's like 15 whole seats in the place.
It is a tiny spot, which makes it like, that's part of what makes it so good, too. It's like so intimate. But, okay, so Flo, you got, you, you're graduating.
I'm graduating.
Thursday, October 6th.
And on the day that this episode is published.
Uh, we're actually, I think we're trying to find a way to videotape this, uh, videotape. How old am I?
They give you a handcorder?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull out. Uh, yeah, but, um, I think we're trying to find a way to record this, uh, to put it on some of the patron only stuff. So, so folks will let you know about that. But I'm so excited, super excited for it. Uh, I'm super excited for you. Like, what a fun little journey to like, I, I think, um, how many of us have like dreamt of the concept of doing standup, uh, and then how few of us actually have the, you know, the really audacity to do it. Uh, so I'm glad you're doing it.
Right word. That's absolutely right word. And I will say a big shout out to the Comedy Spot because they have both improv and, um, comedy, like one-on-one and two-on-one classes. And so if you're thinking about it, I have been saying to people like, I think sometimes we take ourselves too seriously and especially as adults, we should not be afraid to try something that maybe we won't be great at, like, but that can just be a lot of fun. So I'm, you know, I'm not getting paid to do this. It's just some things that like the stakes are really low. So I'm just gonna do my best and try to have fun and you know, hope, hope that people laugh. And if not, it'll be that time Flo got up on stage and embarrassed herself in front of a lot of people.
I, I just want to tell you now that my five minutes of booze come from a place of love. I just want to push you.
I love the idea of people just being like, boo.
Boo this woman. Just doing a set. All right. Well, shall we start the show?
Sure.
All right, let's do it. We got a great guest today. Oh, hello everyone. You have Kemper.
And Flo.
And Katie Maple.
And yes.
We've got Katie Maple today. Oh, I love when we have guests. Um, so, uh, no, uh, why do I keep saying no Flo? You're the, like, you're right there.
I'm right here. I'm right here.
No Skylar, no Shannon today. I believe they'll be back next week, but we're super excited to have candidate for District Five of City Council Sacramento, Katie Maple. How you doing today, Katie?
I'm great. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so we wanted to do an intro to you, discuss kind of your, um, your race, uh, kind of just why you're running, what's important to you, and kind of everything surrounding that. Before I jump into that, we do this now at the top of the episode. I want to let folks know that if you like our show, if you think we're doing good work, please go to patreon.com/voicesrivercity. And for as little as $5 a month, you can support us in all the work we're doing. We love what we're doing. Do you support us?
I love that.
I'm getting good.
That was very NPR-esque. I appreciate it.
I'm Audi Cornish. Uh, no, uh, so anyway, uh, no, so super excited to start this episode off with you, uh, Katie. Um, so where do we even begin? Why don't we start out with, um, I, I guess just kind of the who you are, the introduction and the why of your candidacy. Um, I think, um, when I've talked to you in the past and, and from what I've seen, uh, in your, in your candidacy, uh, writing, um, a lot of your why is really the crux of it is sort of your relationship with homelessness, uh, the fact that you did leave home at 16. Um, and there's been a lot of work that you've done even during COVID alongside, uh, everyone's friend, uh, Crystal. Um, uh, I'm just like really giving people, uh, the things they need that will help them get through today, tomorrow. So why don't we just talk about that right now? Why, why don't you tell us who you are, why you're running?
Okay, done. Um, so I'm Katie Maple and I'm candidate for Sacramento City Council in District Five. And I've said that now, I think, 8,000 times in the last few years. Um, and I always start out with my personal story, uh, because it's my driver, it's my primary reason for running. And that's, um, you touched on this, like, I grew up in a very tumultuous household. Uh, my mom, you know, left when I was pretty young. My dad raised my sisters and I, um, and we really struggled. We had a lot of issues internally and, um, you know, issues with like mental health and, and, and all kinds of stuff in the family. A lot of, a lot of families struggle with, um, with issues. And so I left home at, at 16. Um, and I was unhoused for a period of time. Um, I left, uh, when I first left, I slept on my best friend's, still my best friend's bed and her mom's, their couch for a while and then rented their brother's room for 200 bucks a month, uh, once he went off to college at UC Davis. And, um, that was a big part, like a core, core learning experience for me was I was so independent. I thought I was like, I'm like, I'm gonna leave home and make it out in the world. And then it was very, very rude awakening of what that was really like. Um, especially, I actually, um, was on another podcast, um, called The Black Youth Leadership Project, um, Black B Row on Monday. Um, and one of the questions, they kind of like delved in deeper because they were, they're really interested in, in issues related to youth. Uh, and they said, well, were you emancipated? And I said, actually, no. I tried to become emancipated, um, and, uh, only one of my family, only one of my parents would sign it and the other one didn't. Um, and I actually thank him for it now because at the time he was like, I'm not going to sign this because it means that you won't have healthcare anymore. And as a 16 year old, I was like, I don't need healthcare. Um, and now I look back on that and think, man, how, how did that much of that, that one decision save me? It made it harder in other ways, like getting housing, for example. Um, but it was definitely, um, helpful in terms of having like access to healthcare. So yeah, so then I, you know, I slept in my car while I was in college, um, off and on, really struggled, struggled in poverty as well. Worked in the restaurant industry for almost a decade, waiting tables, you know, working as a hostess, cocktail server at a, at a casino, you name it, I did it. Um, and I just really experienced a lot of difficulty like navigating those systems, especially, um, once I transferred to UC Davis from American River College. That was a time in my life when I realized that a lot of the systems around us were not designed for people who, uh, didn't like, didn't have their parents help them pay for college, for example, um, or didn't have to work full-time, uh, and go to school like I did. Um, so I really struggled and had some of my first experiences of advocacy at that time. Uh, we can get into that later, but afterward, um, you know, I've always had this heart of compassion. We need to be looking out for people that don't have a social safety net. Um, and that's based on personal experience. That's based on looking around me, looking at my own family. Um, and so looking around as I was, as being in the pandemic, um, started Sack Soup, which I'm sure we can get into a little bit later with Crystal Sanchez and Zoe Tipping. Um, and was just showing up to City Hall every, you know, every week and being like, hey, what are we doing? And I, I remember the exact moment that I decided, um, that I wanted to run, um, and that we, we showed up to, on Zoom to City Hall to advocate because there were all these empty city buildings. So people weren't going to work. They were staying home, working from home. Uh, and people lived out on the street, obviously, like right outside of them. And so, um, Crystal and others said, hey, why don't we work with some nonprofits and partner to get some, some of these people off the streets and into these buildings that we know are empty, that we know the city owns, um, and, and help them get connected to services. And, uh, you know, one of the council members, uh, has basically said, no, 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 I, that's unfair to the developers. I think we should call them first and give them an opportunity. And I just was really blown away by that answer. I was just like, what? How, how is that like an appropriate response in that moment, in this moment, when we're literally in a pandemic and people are struggling on our streets? And so that was the moment I decided to run. Uh, and it's been a almost a year journey since then. So I'll pause there.
I mean, that moment actually, like, that's, that's something, uh, and it's, I don't know, maybe Flo, we've talked about this on the show, but like, it is, the pandemic showed us, it took everyone's mask off fully, right? Um, and
When it should have put everybody's mask on, but that's a conversation for another day.
Oh shit, that was good.
You walked into that one.
Um, but yeah, um, so can you, what, why don't we talk about, uh, your work with Sack Soup, uh, before we start hopping into the rest of it? I, I helped you with like one or two little things early on during that. Um, you needed a truck one day, I think. And like, um, but can you tell folks what Sack Soup is? Um, you know, Zoe, who started it with you is the librarian at, um, at Loaves and Fishes. Um, and Crystal is sort of, what, how do you describe Crystal? She's just like a force.
President of the Sacramento Homeless Union, she's on the board of the National Homeless Union.
She, she's the most powerful person I've ever met.
8,000 different other hats that I've seen her wear. Uh, so
So you were saying the three of you started this. Uh, talk, talk to us about this and kind of what it did.
Yeah. So, um, so I'll start with how it kind of began. And, and this was really like the brainchild of Crystal more than anything. Um, and I just happened to kind of get plugged in at the right time. Are you choking? You okay?
Okay, sorry.
Please don't die.
Such a beautiful story.
Um, so yeah, so this was during the pandemic. Um, I was working for Perfect Union, which is a cannabis company based in Sacramento. Um, and, uh, we had, at the time, sales were great. That's the thing that happened in the cannabis industry. Like, we thought we were, like, the cannabis industry thought they were going to be shut down. Um, because there was that period of time where the governor was deciding what was essential, what was not essential. And all, you know, a lot of the industry, no matter what your industry was, was like, oh my God, what's going to happen to us? Um, and so the governor declared cannabis as essential. Um, and so that changed the trajectory of, of the organization. And so we actually had a lot of money, um, that was coming in and a commitment as a company to give back to the community and to like invest that back. Um, and so I got to be a little bit a part of that, which was cool. Wasn't my, my main role there, but I got to help decide where some things went. And so, um, I went up to the, I went up to the CEO and, um, him and I both were peddling for Mercy Peddlers at the time. I don't know if you're familiar with this group.
Yeah, that's Sister Libby, former ED, Executive Director of Loaves and Fishes, which is the service provider for people in emergency homeless situations. She left and kind of retired and created this like beautiful thing where like, it was just this dream of hers where you just like ride around on a bike and provide folks with tricycle, yeah, and provide people with things that they might need. Uh, it's, it's really cool.
Yeah, yeah. So it's like a trike, trike, and it's got like a basket on the back and you have coffee and baskets of the other materials, like toiletries and things like that. And so we were riding around and we were, and this was, uh, like late February, early March, um, 2020. And, um, I'm talking to people as I'm handing them coffee and I'm, and I'm saying, do you know what COVID-19 is? No. Okay. Do you have somewhere you can wash your hands? No. Do you have somewhere you can shelter in place? No. Um, and I was really shocked because at this point in time, everyone knew what COVID-19 was. It was like, people were afraid, people were changing their behaviors. And then we had thousands of people on the streets that really were not being made aware at all. Um, it was a complete failure of, of information and communication. And so I was naive at the time and I thought, there must be a plan. I just don't know what it is. And so I sent emails to like the city, the county, the health department, the, you name it. And I said, hey, what's the plan for, um, you know, all of the unhoused people on our street? Uh, definitely some at-risk people here are definitely a big risk of it spreading and, and people dying. Um, so what are we going to do? Um, and the response I got back is we don't have one. And that was really, um, eye-opening to me. And so, uh, then I, you know, when I got connected to Crystal, because I asked around, I said, who's doing the work? You know, who's going to work on the ground? Got connected to her. I said, hey, what, what do you need? How can I help? Um, and then what the first thing we thought of is okay, like hand washing stations. Let's do something really simple. And so, you know, I started to go fund me, raised several thousand dollars and then I got the company to match it. And just went to the city of Sacramento. I said, you guys don't even have to do anything. We'll put out, uh, you know, these hand washing stations and maintain them for a period of time. We just want your partnership to make sure they're not going to get taken away or the, you know, enforced upon in some way. Uh, and then hopefully, you know, once we ran out of money, which was going to happen at some point in time, that you guys want to take these over. Um, and so that happened. And then it just kind of like spiraled from there, um, where we started noticing that a lot of the other groups, um, like Loaves and Fishes, for example, that were primarily feeding and, and providing resources to people were starting to shut down or reduce their hours because they were at risk. A lot of these groups are run by older people, specifically with older women. Um, and so there was this, and then simultaneously, there were all these people reaching out that were at home and anxious and didn't know how to channel their energy and wanted to help. And so what Sack Soup became was that connection point. We, it started out with like a really crazy Facebook group message that got quickly out of hand. So then I created a Slack channel or Slack, uh, group and that ballooned to 500 people over the course of a couple of years. And it just became that connection point of people who are already doing work, people who wanted to plug in in some way, whether they wanted to cook meals, but they couldn't, you know, risk going out. And so they were connecting them with someone who wanted to distribute, you know, UC Davis medical students, the people who needed care and so on. So it just kind of became this connection point and collaborative solution in a way where a lot of needs weren't being met.
Yeah. Can we, why don't we bring that into, um, you know, the, I don't know. If you live in Sacramento, you know what Sack Soup is. You know what Sack Soup was doing during this time. Um, you all had a very, a very solid social presence online. And kept folks abreast of like all the work you were doing.
I would like to take any credit for that, but I can't. That was a lot of like Crystal and Zoe.
Yeah. Um, let's, well, why don't we jump into like, I think we all know that homelessness is the issue of the day, uh, in our state, in our city. Um, it has exploded in recent years. Um, housing prices are skyrocketing. Um, our homelessness numbers from the point in time count we're seeing are just, um, just, just
Almost 70% increase in the last, since the last one. Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, and the last one I believe was 2019 and the most recent was 2022 because, uh, during COVID, they didn't want to do a one in the odd year because of the pandemic. But you know, that's the issue of the day. Um, can you talk to us a little bit about kind of like, all right, Katie Maple gets elected into office. What's her vision on addressing homelessness?
Yeah. This is the, the number one thing that I get asked about and for good reason. Um, uh, now having knocked on, I was trying to do my math the other day, but, uh, well over 10,000 doors, um, and talk to people is that's the only thing anyone wants to talk about. You can start talking about, you can, like, I could literally be like, no, let's talk about the Brillo grass at the park. Um, and we'll have to come back to that later if you finish realizing this. But, um, and they will, they'll want to talk about homelessness. And so I think that that's for a lot of reasons. People see human suffering on the streets and it hurts. It doesn't matter what your viewpoint is on it. Nobody wants to see someone suffering, especially when we live in the capital city of the fifth largest economy in the world. It's really hard to, to wrap their minds around that we can't figure out a way to help a finite number of people get the help that they need to not suffer on the streets. And so that's how I feel too. Um, and I think this is one of those really unique issues where, uh, normally you have a, what appears to be a very complex problem and the people, everyone disagrees. They disagree on solutions. They disagree on how to get there. This is one of the very few things where no matter who you are, you agree on what you want to happen, which is that in reality, nobody should be, you know, sleeping and dying on our street. Right? You know, like, I think that most people agree that we want people to be get into some kind of housing, some kind of shelter, somewhere where they feel safe and able to, to be who they are. And what, what people disagree on is how to get there. Um, and so I think that that's a really good place to be. If you have people who are willing to come together, be collaborative and work on solutions. Um, so I always bring up my, my nerdy plan, which is that we don't have to recreate the wheel. I think it's really important that I, I have often found that if you look at cities, uh, in my last job, we used to have to go to cities all over California, um, to do advocacy around cannabis. Um, and I noticed that every city feels like they have to do things on their own and solve problems on their own, even though these are problems that are not unique to them. So, so homelessness is a great example. Like whenever you hear the conversations in the city about what we should do, it's always like, we have to come up with a plan. It's like, do we, or do we need to really look around us and see who's doing, has already had success, right? And model after these things that work and make them, you know, work for our city. So, um, I like to talk about a program just north of us. It's called the Stutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. Uh, and it's a collaboration. It's a formal partnership between two counties, five cities, school districts, nonprofits, small businesses, like everyone. Um, and they do two really important things that I think we really need to consider here as a region. One is they've created the five-year strategic action plan. We've never done that. Um, so like really just thinking about like, what's the population that we're trying to serve? What are the different issues that go into that? You know, how many people are escaping domestic violence? How many people are there because they just need help getting into housing they can afford? How many people need, you know, drug and alcohol treatment? How many people need mental health treatment? Like, it's homelessness is this big word that we put on a collection of issues and we just kind of talk about it like it's something and it's not. But we're never going to be able to get any of those little pieces if we don't talk about it from a strategic standpoint.
If you don't triage it, yeah.
Yeah. And then number two, uh, they pool their funding together. And I think that's probably the most important thing. Right now, we fail because we act in silos. So the city tries to do what they can do with the spot of money and the county's doing this with their pot of money and this old grove and such as high. So like my grand vision is actually like, we should not even talking about city and county. We talk about Yola County, Stack County, Old Grove, which is high, what's that? Um, and Sacramento and imagine what we could do with not only that strategic planning, but pulling those funds together to make sure that we can actually use an economy of scale. Um, this is a problem that every community is, is experiencing. So that's my big, that's my nerdy answer. Um, I can't do that on my own. Uh, I'm not naive. I, you know, I'm not going to be like Katie Maple coming into office, kicking down doors and doing everything on my own. But I think that um, I'm really excited that there's going to be, no matter what, some new energy on the council, someone new, hopefully Justin Moreno, uh, on the county board of supervisors and, and hopefully some more energy around working collaboratively.
Yeah. You know, honestly, I think, um, that when we had, uh, Katie Valenzuela and, and, and even my Vang like come onto city council. Obviously they don't have the votes for the, the big picture things they want to do, but just having them there, speaking them into existence, I think is really, really important. And yeah, I mean, like getting one more person on there who has a similar vision, like that's, we're just two votes away at this point, right?
Yeah. I mean, and even some of these other, you know, I don't pretend to know what every other candidate or person feels or thinks on any one issue. I think people are a lot more complex than sometimes those around us try to, try to put us into boxes. But I think that hopefully everybody who's running and, um, who's currently in office has an interest in making change, especially on this issue. Um, because all they're feeling it for sure. Like their constituents are telling them this is the number one issue. We're hearing it in the media. We're hearing it everywhere. And so either we do something about it or a lot of people are not going to be in office moving forward because people are, are getting to the point where there's, they want to see solutions, they want to see change.
So I, I really am appreciating this conversation, but I want to go back to like the premise because Dave kind of like hit on where I, I think I'm going to go with this, which is having been out and, you know, having conversations with people, I'm not sure we're all on the same page about what we actually want to see happen. I don't know that we all believe that housing is a human right and that we have a responsibility to provide it. And so I'm really curious, you know, I mean, you've obviously knocked on 10,000 doors and I, I've never done the math over the years, given that I've worked on so many different campaigns and for candidates, how many doors I've knocked on. But I'm just not, I, I, and I don't typically describe myself as a cynic, but I'm not resoundingly hearing people say, I believe people should have housing. I'm more so hearing people say, this problem makes me feel bad and I want those feelings to go away. And I think the people who are rooted in more of a social justice orientation maybe are saying, I think that looks like some of the things you described. And I think the people for whom that is not the frame or lens that they look at the world are like, I just want those feelings to go away. And I think, I, I, I think I run up against that a lot when we deal with issues of racism and sexism and many of the other challenges of like, there are people who really want to address the issue at its core and do basic prevention. And there are the people who want to stop feeling bad about it and make it kind of go away. And I don't know, I don't know how you bridge those. So I'm really curious to know first, why, why, why you think that we're, we're more aligned than we aren't? Because maybe that's just my, my perspective, but also like, what do you do if we're really not? Like, how do we, how do we move that together?
Yeah. No, that's a really good point. And like, no doubt, there are certainly people that say some really problematic things, especially at the doors. I'm like, ooh, you know, um, including the, the increased dehumanization of people, um, uh, on the street by not, by individuals in the media has, is really concerning. Um, there's certainly, I've heard really, I'm sure you've heard them too, so I'm not going to repeat them here, but people make comments about people who are living outside, um, and so they're not human beings. And have some really horrible suggestions for how to deal with the problem from their perspective. But there are people like that. There are people like that all over. And I think it's a responsibility of leaders to, to say, you know, I, I obviously if elected, my job is to represent people, to represent the community, but that doesn't mean that I'm going to, like, I'm going to represent all of your ideas, especially if, if they are not like morally right to me, or they don't fall in line with like my vision or values. And so you listen to everybody and you make sure that you lead with your heart and your conscience. And that's, that's where I come from. It's like, I think that at, at the bare minimum, everybody, people agree that they don't think that people should be sleeping with or without tents on, on sidewalks, you know, in the city, right? And even if we don't agree on the reasons why, like some people are like, I don't want to see that, or I, um, they might have their own personal reasons for why they feel that way. I think they fundamentally agree, whatever the solution is, it's not that. And so if you can get people there, then you can talk about, okay, well, we have people who are, you know, do the work on the ground every day. And this is what they think the solutions are. It's, it's especially those people that are sometimes more like conservative folks that are sometimes hear you if you're like, well, here's what the research says. Here's what people who like do this work say and what, what we need to do. And it's not just, I try to cut through people who, yeah, like listen to the experts. And that's a key component of like everything that I want to do, by the way, which is like, I'm not an expert. Like, you know, I know probably a little bit more about this issue than, than some other people maybe, um, in office. Uh, because of like firsthand experience and because of some of the work with Sack Soup, but I am not an expert, but there are a lot of people who are. And I think it's really incumbent on like leaders, whoever gets elected to, to listen and to make sure those people have the table. Which is why I get really frustrated when you see things like the two by two by four or five or six or whatever that committee is.
Whatever it is. That's what I'm calling that now. The two by two by four by five by six or whatever.
And it, and it's like the chamber and, you know, like selected officials. And I'm like, well, where are the people? First of all, where are the impacted voices? Like where are the people experiencing it? Because nobody can tell you better what they need than who, than people who are experiencing it. But then also, who are the people that are doing this work every day? They know what the solutions are. They've been screaming it from the rooftop for years and years and years and years. And they always get cast aside. Uh, and we tend to default to people who don't really know what they're talking about to come up with solutions again. So, uh, I think that's a really important part of the process.
Yeah. I was going to say, that's, that's a tall task, right, to overcome. So I'm really curious. Yeah. I was going to say, that's, that's a tall task, right? To overcome. So I'm really curious. I mean, you, you know, this idea of, of taking advice from other places where things have worked. I, we say that a lot in public health as well. So that really resonates. And I'm just curious. You know, you join, um, let's say you join, you know, a city council and now you are one of those voices. How do you actually move beyond some of the fissures and fractures that have made it so we're not working with Yolo County and we're not working with Sacramento County and we're not working with El Grove or any of the other, you know, there are seven incorporated cities within the county of Sacramento. Um, and so what, what does that look like? Um, how do you overcome? Because I, I mean, like you've said, you're not the first person to say we should be working together and yet it doesn't happen. So I'm, I'm curious what your thoughts are around that.
And you know, I'll be completely honest, we will see too. Um, like one of the things, people always ask me like, what's my, what's my day one? You know, like what, what are you going to do? Like, and I know people like have usually have like big things to say. And for me, it's talking with staff. Literally it's meeting with every department, making sure that I understand the issues, making sure that I understand the stuff that I can't understand on the campaign trail because I literally can't know it. Because I'm not allowed to, um, stuff that happens in closed session, stuff that lawsuits that have impacted the city, like literally everything. What's been trialed? What, why hasn't it worked? What, what's the, nobody knows better than staff that have been there for like 20 plus years about like why there's beef between people at the city and people of the county and people here and like getting that information so that I'm well equipped to go in and actually make change. Um, and two, building coalitions and partnerships, right? Like relationships are the most important part about this and about getting, making change. As you know, it's the work that you do too. And I, I'm, you know, I, I'm not going to be able to do it on my own, but I think there's enough energy between myself, between Katie, between my, hopefully Dr. Moreno. As the elected, but also like working together to get staff on board and, and build an outside coalition that's not just elected officials. You like people who are, regardless of whether or not I'm there or someone else can, can be a part of the process. And I think that that's how you make lasting things. And also being willing to utilize, like I have a career, I used to work in advocacy in the legislature and in cities around California and like using things like the media, using social media, using coalition building as, as advocacy tools. When you're not able to make change on your own, it's also really effective because sometimes if you can't make that change on your own, which I would love to do, I'd love to build that coalition, uh, you know, on the council and you know, with others at the county and other places. But sometimes if that doesn't work, like using pressure from the outside as a really effective tool to get people to move.
My answer would have been that you, Katie Valenzuela and my Vang do a hit them up style, uh, video. Against Florida Supes. Hey, I'm spitballing here. It's a podcast, folks. Can we? I, I, I think we have to touch on measure O in this discussion. So you recently came out against measure O. Full disclosure, I am working on this. The No On O flow has been working on this and we are staunchly against it. Uh, and we find it to be a very inhumane, costly, dumb thing.
Personally and professionally.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm no on O at work and in, and everywhere else.
And at home. Can, can you talk to us a little bit about why you landed where you did? And, and kind of, yeah, let, let's just go there.
Sure. Yeah. So I really took the time to, I think I went to three or four different, um, I don't think they call them debates, but forums. Um, between the proponents and opponents of measure O, because I really wanted to make sure. I knew where I was probably going to land, of course, based on my history and background, but I also really wanted to hear, like, I'm like, is there something I'm missing? Cause I've read this. Uh, I think I, I know what I think about it, but maybe there's something I'm missing here. And going and listening to those things, especially the proponents of it, um, really solidified in my mind that I, that I had to oppose it. Because there's so many unanswered questions and they're really important unanswered questions, like as you all know, um, and the proponent of it, uh, I saw him multiple times, got asked the same question multiple times at different events. And every time had the same answer, which is like, oh, I don't know. I need to go back and read this. I'm not sure. And at first I thought, okay, well, maybe he's just unprepared for this forum. And then I realized, no, no, he's just intentionally not answering this question.
Was it the funding question?
Uh, questions around funding, around services, around like space requirements. Like there's a lot of different ones from the actual like misdemeanor charges. Uh, all kinds of stuff. Um, but I, I noticed a pattern. So I'm like, either you, you just really didn't take the time from the last one to now to find the answers to the questions that you got, or you're perfectly not answering them.
Can I, I just remembered that I didn't tell folks what measure O is. So it is a ordinance that's being pushed forward that would allow the city to increase sweeps, particularly sweeps of camps that have four or more tents of people who are not like family members by blood. It allows, um, city residents to sue the city if there is somebody camping by their home. And in that regard, it's called, what, what is the term for that flow?
What, what is the term for?
Uh, like allowing like residents to just sue the city. Like it's, uh, Rahim in the Chronicle wrote this and, and the reporter, God, I, I always forget her name.
I was like, I, I don't know lawsuits.
Yeah, yeah. But it's like, it's basically, it allows like citizens to just hamstring a city or a jurisdiction with lawsuits. Um, and that's what it's trying to do. In the same way that in the South, they do that on abortion, right? Um, so that's, that's what it's doing. Yes, it does say that there need to be 600 shelter spaces, but there's no specification of what those spaces are. Where they will be, how it will be funded. Um, it can be as little as 10 feet by 10 feet, which is smaller than a jail cell and has fewer resources than a jail cell. And so, you know, we're looking at this and in as much as we want to end homelessness, as much as everyone else, we see this as deeply problematic and harmful to the community. Sorry, Katie, I, I, I had to.
That's good background. Um, thank you for doing that, just so, so people know. And, um, there's a lot of, you outlined, you know, all the, most of the reasons, but there's one that I think ha- is really compelling to me as someone who could potentially, um, be in elected office and, uh, having to, you know, make decisions around the city budget. So, um, Howard Chan at, uh, June 30th, the council meeting.
City manager.
The city manager. Thank you very much. Um, uh, brought to the council, basically that the city would, would have a project, projected budget deficit of approximately $13 million um, at the current rate of the, of what we currently offer for shelter beds and services. And that could jump to as much as 60 million, between 40 and 60 million, uh, what he calls the gap for homeless services. And so there's a lot of reasons for that. But the reason why I bring that up is because what this, what measure O would do is put the city at huge financial risk, individual citizens suing the city. Right? When the city is already going above and beyond and doing, and I know we need to do more, but like it's already providing virtually the same number of shelter beds as the county with one sixth or one seventh of the budget. And you know, not having the same resources or ability to do social services, mental health services, drug and alcohol treatment, so on. And to me, that doesn't make any sense. So we're taking away what few resources we do have to give to individual citizens, taxpayer dollars that need to be going towards helping people through this. And then again, to your point, the, the spaces argument is huge to me too. Like this is not providing shelters, is not providing housing, does not providing services. And it's certainly, I would argue, making it harder for that to happen, not easier. And then it, you know, just look at the history of it too, right? Like the proponents of this measure went to the city manager and the city and said, we're going to put, you know, another measure on the ballot, um, that would have literally bankrupted the city. Uh, and when the city went back to them and said, well, why aren't you targeting this at the county? The county is, you know, in a lot of ways, not stepping up to the plate for the, what they're supposed to provide, right? Like all these services that are needed. Um, and they said, don't worry, we're going to do that too. Which by the way, of course they didn't. And we, like, we know, everyone knows that they need to be targeting their, what they should be doing is working on solutions. I think real solutions is doing what, what people who work in this space, uh, advocate for, and that's building affordable housing, low income housing, making sure that we have the services we need. But you know, also if they're going to do something like this, it's really something that should have been more targeted at the county. It doesn't make sense to do the city and it places, places the city at huge financial risk. So those are just some of like the baseline things of why this makes no sense to me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to try and not get ranty because this is an episode introducing you, but like this, all three of us, I think, know the head of the metric chamber personally. And she's a very smart person. She is not an expert on this topic. She's not. And they should not have put forward this kind of legislation, this kind of law or, you know, measure without the actual experts discussing what the actual answers are. Like this is, it's harmful. It only serves the rich people in the Sacramento region and like people, the more you talk to folks, the more they know that. But like, that's the problem here. It's like, we know who the experts are. Why are we not listening to them? Why do we refuse to listen to them?
Well, I also think it's like kind of a, uh, I'm going to use the wrong analogy. I just know it. I'm going to say it anyway, like a red herring. Because what they're billing this as, even to the business community, um, and to wealthy individuals is something that's going to solve the problem. When in actuality, this isn't going to do that, right? So they're billing this as, we want change, we want change right now. And this is the thing to do it. And it's just not. It's just not like, and so that's the other thing to me that I'm like, how, this is, you're only going to, it's only going to backfire on you at the end if this does pass because you're not going to, you're not going to get everyone off the street overnight. You're not going to be able to get people in the housing and services. And it's not going to fundamentally drastically change the lives of these business owners that you're representing. Um, and that's going to frustrate them probably even more because people get really mad when you sell them the bill of goods and, and it's, and then they don't get the results that they want.
Yeah. Quick numbers, because I, I know Flo wants to say something, but 600 shelter spaces is what they're offering. The last point in time count, we had 4,444 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness within our city. That's just a fraction of that, right? Not only that, we have 20,000 people within the city who are on the verge of homelessness. Who are on their way into that space, right? 27 people a week, something like that. End up in homelessness situations. This does not stanch the flow. This is a systemic issue.
Yeah, it really is. I, yeah, I mean, I think the thing I'm, I'm challenged by, and I, I'd love for us to be able to kind of get into the challenging parts of this, right? So you know, these issues aren't new, as we all know. And we have a city council that is filled with people who have in some ways made this, made some of these issues worse, right? Um, I think we talked about this a lot with, with, um, you know, measure O and the no campaign of like the entire city council at the time opposed rent control when it was on the ballot. They have actively, you know, fought against paying livable wages in the city. Like there's lots of opportunities. And so I know, you know, Katie, we had conversations about you earlier in your Candace candidacy on the show. Um, and a lot of folks who support you, um, and who share values with us and are listeners to our show really didn't like some of the things that we were talking about. And I think one of the big critiques that we had, um, and that I think, you know, um, was also raised by the Sacramento sister circle was the fact that you haven't have, you know, endorsed Angelique Ashby, who as the sole woman on the council at the time, was one of the basically biggest opponents to some of the things that we've been talking about for the last half an hour or so. And so I'm really curious to know a little bit more about like, how as somebody who's not been in elective, elected office already, but has, you know, been in the community doing some of this work. How do we reconcile? We're all trying to figure out sort of where you land on things and why you're making the decisions. And that seems like a real big red flag of like, are you really serious about this? Because she's running for a higher office. Um, and I know one of the arguments that has come up is like, if she wins that office, she will be in the state house and potentially make your life harder to do the things you've just talked about because she's already shown and voted and it's on the record, it's not supporting the things that we're trying to do. So I'd really love for you to be able to say in your own words, you know, what that is, um, why, and how you reconcile those things. Cause I know that's been confusing to a lot of people.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I have a, I think now, so it's been over a year, maybe a year and several months since I made that endorsement. Um, I have done Zoom calls. I have done meetings. I have done group sessions with people and, and really like done my best to talk to as many people as I can about that issue. Cause it, it did come up a lot. And it's something that I would say, first of all, one of the things that I hope always is that people take me for me. Uh, because, uh, you know, we all, I can't, as a young person, uh, and, uh, uh, in particular, I am so often judged by those around me and not by who I am, what I believe in and what I want to do. And this is, uh, to me, another example of that. Like my endorsement of Angelique Ashby, um, as a longtime friend of mine, which I'll get into it. Doesn't really mean a lot in terms of her campaign, in terms of what she's, whether or not she's going to go into office. Um, and I did so because she has been a long, long time friend and a mentor of mine. I have known Angelique for years and she was one of the very first people, um, that, that when I first started, um, getting involved at all, not even in government. It's like fresh out of college, like took me under her wing, um, and really helped show me the rope, got me, got me connected and supported me along the way. She's been that actually for a lot of women in town in particular and people. Um, and we don't agree on everything, just like there's a lot of people in town that I don't agree with on everything and, and they don't agree with me on everything. And so that's just part of how, like part of the life of working in as human beings in politics. We're not going to always agree with everyone around us. But I also know that there's a lot of good that she has done. And I think frankly, a lot of things that she has done, don't get focused on. Um, I'm not sure all the reasons for it, but I would tie some of it, at least some of it to sexism. For example, like during the pandemic, she was one of the only people that I was able to call and a lot of us, including Crystal, uh, was able to call to actually come out and get help on issues related to homelessness. Like she would literally help connect to SACRT, help bring out, you know, bags of food, help us connect the services when we put out the, the hand washing stations. That was her. Um, and so, you know, I do agree, there are things that we don't agree with. We don't agree on rent control for sure. Um, but I also believe that having that relationship with her, if she is elected, that I'm able to, and I have, you know, have been able to already have those conversations with her to bring her, bring her over if she is, uh, leaning in a different direction. So I hope to use that relationship if she's, if she's elected to continue to, to push on her on things that are important to me, like Medicare for All, for example.
So, so I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. So the, the big thing for you is that it's about the relationship. Cause I, I've, I've heard that argument from other people as well, right? I mean, when I had conversations with some of the city council members at the time, when they endorsed the, the district attorney, they said, look, we don't think Noah Phillips is going to win anyway. We want to have an open line of communication with Anne Marie Schubert. So that's why we endorsed her. And like, I, I can, I mean, on one hand, I can understand that if this, if you know, the, the election seems like a foregone conclusion, why burn a bridge if you don't have to? But I, I also just, I, I think the, the challenge coming in is like, I don't think you're being judged for having a friendship with Angelique, but an endorsement is saying, I think this is the best person for the job. And so that's something that you willingly did as saying, I'm going to endorse her because you always have the option of staying neutral. And I think at least for me, endorsements are different. Like I have tons of friends of all different walks of life. And let's be honest, some of them are really good at, you know, being employees and, you know, running businesses and some of them aren't. And I'm not their friend because they run a business well or not, but I'm also not going to tell you to go to, you know, my friend or to hire my friend if I know that they're not reliable. And I can, I mean, at least for me, I can separate out, we are really good friends and you suck at this job. And I don't want you to, I don't want to, I don't want my good name to be on the record saying you should have another job like it. Because that reflects poorly on me. And so I'm struggling a little bit with the idea that you feel like it's unfair to judge you because you jumped into the boat politically by saying she's the best candidate for this job. And that does seem to reflect, and it does, I mean, it rightly brings up questions about, well, how committed are you to these things? So I just want, I, I like, I,
I'm not saying that I think it's unfair for you to judge me. Definitely, you know, feel free to judge away. Cause it's part of the, part of what I'm. Absolutely. Um, but also I want to say like Angela has done a lot of work and, uh, she's not as progressive as me. That's for sure. She sounds progressive with a lot of people. Um, and, but she's also gotten a lot done and she's, you know, beloved in her community. And I think that's something that's really important to acknowledge, like the work that she has done. Um, and, and work that I have seen her done over the years and worked with her on, like, for example, the city's first um, gender and ethnic diversity audit. Like she single-handedly did that with, with a group of other women in town um, to push for that and has led to like real actionable change at the city. And so like she's, she's, you know, complex. She's been there a long time. She's also like been endorsed by the party. She's been endorsed by, by labor groups, like uh, over the years, the fem dems, all these that I used to be on the board of. So to like, for me, I have a hard time putting her in a box because it's not, she's not exactly the person that I want her to be. I think that she is a really effective leader too. If you look at what she's been able to do in her district over the last 12 years. Um, I, I find it really impressive and I think a lot of other people do too. Um, so you know, I, I know that not everybody agrees with me on this issue. Um, but you know, Angela, I stand by her and I, I'm, I'm supportive of her.
I, I mean, we, we have to respect. I, I mean, we, we have to respect it because that's, that's your position on it. I'd just say as, as, you know, part of the black community in Sacramento, I think that there is a very, very strong and resounding challenge to some of the ways like that she has been harmful specifically to us. While for a long time carrying the banner of women and we were saying, that sounds like middle-class white women, not the rest of us. Um, and I think that, that is probably another thing that has come up with you being more progressive and having more of these, you know, equity conversations, um, that it, I think it was really surprising for a lot of people because Angelique has been in many ways tokenizing, um, and outright, you know, aggressive, especially when it comes to kind of, you know, harming and marginalizing women of color, um, you know, especially black women. And I, I just, you know, I, I feel the need for that to also, at least in my words, to be out there on the record because it's hurtful. Um, it's hurtful to people who thought she was a friend, um, a classmate, a colleague. Um, and, you know, and, and to people that she has, has tokenized, right? And kind of tried to weaponize against advanced peace, against, you know, moving forward with work to be able to reform policing, like she's done some real harm to, to folks and I, that's, that's just hard to, to reconcile. But I think we should move on because there's a lot more to get into, but I just wanted us to be able to have that conversation on the record because I don't like elephants in the room. Um, and I know that was a big one.
That was a biggie between you two. Yeah, the two of you. Um, so
Well, I appreciate it too. And to your last point, um, that's actually the first time that I've heard, um, anyone bring that up. So if you ever want to like connect offline, yeah, I could chat about it. Um, so again, I always hope that people take me for, for me. And there's a lot of people around us. We all have people around us. We can't always um, know or dictate or choose the actions of other people. Um, and, uh, so I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah.
I love that Flo is giving the hard-hitting questions and I'm just like laughing the softballs today. Uh, I, I want to jump into, uh, you and, um, your opponent, um, the originally, um, way back when, uh, this, this has been a long campaign. Uh, you were originally running against Andrea Mises Reed. Um, and she got drawn out of the district. And so she was considering moving back into the district, but did not. And now your new, um, uh, the other person you're running against, uh, who is, has won the other top two position with you is Tamiko Heim. Um, she's a longtime Sacramento resident, um, a black woman. She was a part of the Black Child Legacy Campaign.
She's on the Active Transportation Commission, which having previously served in that position for D5, I have to big up
She's a state worker. Yeah. Later in the episode, I'll ask Flo like, shouldn't, like, are, are you gonna, are you like devastated that Katie's running for what, what Jay possibly thought you wanted to run for? So let's talk about
You, you don't live in the district. Do you live in the
I don't anymore. I used to, yeah.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Kendra got discharged out and I willingly defected.
Oh, yeah. She hasn't given a fuck. But I, I wanted to talk about some of Tamiko's backers, you know, Katie, you and I talked over the summer a little bit about this back and forth, like she had literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, of independent expenditures um, in ads against you, uh, from the landlords of California, from the realtors of California, from the developers of California. Uh, I just did a quick little run through on her campaign today and she has currently taken in, this is the campaign, not independent expenditures. So those are different. She's taken in $12,000 from the California Apartment Association, $12,000 from the real estate, uh, PAC, $11,000 from BIA, which is the Builders Industry Far Right Group. $12,000 from the Metro Chamber, $12,000 from the cops. I think i- i- there's a lot of races in Sacramento that I, I'm, I'm obsessed with following the money on like local races, um, and a lot of them
Money Bot, right?
I did, yeah. I haven't been updating that recently.
I think it's a really cool idea. I actually, because there's, isn't there, there's a similar one at the state level. It's like Target.
Yeah, Target Bot or whatever. Yeah, yeah. It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's a cool resource. If you're like, I mean, some of us are nerds that are gonna pour through campaign finance support.
Yeah, folks. If anyone wants to send me money, I'll keep doing it. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, like, uh, so, uh, you know, your opponent has taken a lot, a lot of money from, um, developers and police. And as I was saying in other races, it's a little murkier because some people are taking some from all those pots. But in your race, it's very simple as far as where the money's coming from and who's taking what. You have refused money from real estate, from landlords, from cops and from oil interests. And that to me is, um, kind of a profound thing.
It's also put a ginormous target on my back.
Sure.
Which is really funny, be it just like a side note, uh, I would have thought, you know, it's one thing like to say, it's not like I'm saying F you to everyone. All I'm saying is, hey, I'm not gonna take money, not because I'm not, not because I don't believe that there should be development in the district or not because I believe, you know, one thing or another, but because I think that the community really needs to know that I'm gonna be unbiased. And that's actually viewed as a threat, which is so interesting. It's, it's almost the equivalent as if I had like gone out of my, you know, walked up to their, you know, headquarters and flipped the bird to them or something. And I just find it absolutely fascinating. And I think it shows the how people would like to have power, uh, in politics.
That's it. I mean, like, I think in, in like, I don't think, I know, like it is when you take money from these folks, they will tell you, they will come to you on their day that they need to, and they will tell you where your bread is buttered. And they view folks like you as a threat because they don't have that power over you.
Yep.
Um, so that to me was a, like, the more those contributions started coming in, the more I was like, oh, wow, this is concerning. I don't have a question.
Oh, well, I'll just say, uh,
Flo, do you have a question?
This also got brought up during the fact, fact B, um, interview with, um, with both of us.
Yeah.
And something that kind of got a little tense, like what probably one of the most tense interactions that, um, we've had. Um, and basically I, you know, I used to work in the legislature, used to work as an advocate in legislature and used to work with staff. Um, and it's an unsaid thing that everybody knows is that when, when people give you money, when, when groups especially give you money, they have expectations of you. Right? Um, and what those expectations are depend on who the group is. So for example, I, you know, I have money, I'm like endorsed by the Democratic Party, the, the Central Labor Council, the Teachers Association, 22 Unions, like Sunrise Movement. Like these types of groups
And you're responsible to them.
And you know what? They, they have expectations of me too, right? Like they made that clear. Like we expect that you're going to lead on issues related to workers. We expect that you're gonna lead on issues related to the environment. So on it's like issues related to making sure that we're taking care of like our kids in schools, whatever it may be. And those are things that I, I want them to have that expectation of me. I want them to know that yes, I am gonna stand up for you. I, I will proudly say that I'm the labor candidate or this candidate and so on. And so I think that that's where the rub is. And
Right.
You know, I believe that my opponent's answer at the time of like was, you know, when I was like, hey, like this is how, the reality of how it is. Um, was like kind of defensive and said like, well, no, I'm not bought in paper. I'm like, I'm not saying anything about you. I don't know you as a person. I'm sure that you're not. Um, but I do know based on my work, uh, in and around government and politics, that this is the expectation. And, you know, whether you're aware of it or not, like that's what will be expected of you is what these groups hold as important. And if you don't do the things that they think are important, then you will be held to account in some way or another. And I've literally, I've literally heard groups like this threaten elected officials at, at the state level and say, we're gonna run someone against you next time, or we're gonna pull our funding, or we're gonna do something else that's gonna impact you negatively. So there's very much that dynamic.
The B, by the way, did endorse you. Um, Flo, I, are we allowed to talk about this? Like, you, you know, Tamiko came to you for, to discuss
Yeah, I, I sat down and, and talked to Tamiko, um, when she, I think first made her decision to run. Um, and I think, you know, the, the challenging piece for me, um, was that when I asked her about her, you know, she, I think she had very recently, may not even have been public yet, taken the police money. And I asked her, and I saw I, my first question was like, are you willing to sign the PAC that Katie and I came out with? Because that's one of the first questions that I ask everybody. Um, and she, you know, she, I don't remember. She said she knew about the PAC or just what, but you know, her question kind of back to me was, well, I, yeah, I'm, I'm planning on taking your money. Why is that a problem? Um, and that to me, you know, raised some, some real challenges. And I think the challenge for me is more so what she said later, because I, I do hold, you know, the, the epi part of my brain is like, all things are not always true. And I do hold, you know, um, an example of this being Holly Mitchell, who got a ton of money from the American Beverage Association, in part because, let's be honest, Frederica McGee, who is now like her chief of staff, worked for them. And she never gave him a vote the whole time she was in the legislature, not once.
How you act like we know who Frederica is.
Every, well, she was really big in the Capitol and then she moved over and she was over the
Fucking Frederica.
She was over the, um, the American Beverage Association and now she's her chief of staff. And so she got money and she never gave that, she never gave them a vote. Anytime we came out with, you know, warning labels, regulating the amount of soda in, you know, in schools, whatever, we always got a vote from Senator Mitchell or Assemblymember Mitchell when she was in the, like, there was never a question. And so I, I do think that there are, are, you know, specific situations where you can say, this person gave money and it's not a correlation. But most of the time there is a correlation in part because of the things that you, you were talking about, Katie. And so what was really disappointing to me was then shortly thereafter, she was quoted in the B as having said, I'm not in favor of cutting the police budget. And I know lots of people are not in favor of cutting the police budget. Um, but it seemed like there again is a correlation and also they're the largest budget in the city. So if we're not willing to cut that, then we're gonna cut parks and we're gonna cut this. And I know she's on the record supporting Measure L, which is the kids fund. And so I'm like, well, if the budget goes down and we have the money protected for the kids and we can't cut the police budget, we're gonna cut the parks. We're gonna undercut other things. So you now on the record committing to what feels to be a special interest group that's funding you, and you've kind of hogtied yourself to these two things that don't feel like they're gonna be real, especially if Measure O passes somehow, right? And now we're, we're bleeding millions of extra dollars.
You're, you're like describing my nightmares.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, that's a nightmare scenario. So I, I say all that to say, I'm, you know, I think the money thing is a big deal. I think who you're beholden to is a big deal. And it, it does concern me when I start to hear, when I start to see you get money. And then also your talking points change and you start to become what feels like maybe a mouthpiece for that industry. And that you start espousing policy positions that if you stay true to them, that you could always change your mind and go back on it. But I try to take people during a campaign at base value. And so I, I, that is a thing that I appreciate about you having said, I'm not taking this money because I want to at least be able to, um, to, to, to approach this in a way and the money that I do take, I want to be beholden to those values.
She proudly on her website, you know, says she, her aunt is a deputy sheriff. She says that her stepdad is a retired prison guard, like,
Yeah, she put that on, on mailers too that went out. Um,
Yeah.
I think that her first mailer ever that went out was basically like, I'm Tamiko, my aunt was a sheriff and, and like, I wanna, you know, protect her neighborhoods or something. And I thought that was really interesting is like the first foray that probably most people are gonna be hearing of her because she got into the race so late that she'd only been really, um, in like campaigning for, I think, two months or something before the election or three months before the election.
Yep.
So, um, not a lot of time to like get your name out there and get, have people know who you are. So like, I thought that was really interesting of like choices about how you choose to, um, portray yourself, just like I make those choices too, you know? Um, so I thought that was really interesting. And there was like, uh, you know, IE money, for, for those who don't know independent expenditures, I'm sure you guys have talked about it in the show before, um, but you know, according to the law, um, you know, campaigns cannot coordinate, talk to, know about anything about what's happening um, with those. And so, you know, there's a lot of like, you know, you can say, hey, I didn't know. So of course there were like, I think like seven plus
plausible deniability, right?
Yeah, I will say that, um, IE mailers, um, attacking me in the primary. And, you know, of course, she, she didn't know about those and I can't blame her for them. Um, but what really did bother me was that she also chose to send out two negative mailers from her own campaign about me. And that, to me, that, uh, was honestly, just like in poor taste, um, like especially in a primary election where there's four candidates, to like spend your money, thousands of, each one of those mailers is thousands of dollars to send to people. I know because I'm doing it too. Um, and to make, to make your, your conscious choice to be, I'm going to send out a mailer that's gonna cost me whatever, 10, 12, $15,000. It's gonna specifically say Katie Maple's name. They changed up my maple leaf and put like a cannabis leaf on there. And we're basically just saying like, really like misleading or entry things. Uh, and I
Oh, they made you sound really cool. They
Well, candidate polls pretty high. So I don't know like what the strategy behind that was, but um, in one of the mailers that she sent out, she said, um, Katie gets, gets paid to open up weed stores and working class neighborhoods, Neverland Park, Never Curtis Park, whatever. Um, and then equates them and says adult entertainment. So it's basically trying to make like a link between as though I'm like tied to strip, strip clubs. I'm not entirely sure what that link is supposed to be, but it was really clearly like a dirty hit and uncl- like, and that just bothered me. I'm like, we, we can disagree on policy. We can disagree on a lot of things with it. Um, to go out of your way to attack me from your own campaign, that you acknowledging that you're making a decision to do that. Um, it just didn't, I just thought it was kind of irresponsible, frankly. And we know that negative campaigning reduces voter turnout. So that's the other thing. We already have a, a district that has low turnout as it is compared to some of the other districts. People, you know, have, are not reg, getting registered, not turning up to the polls and they really don't do it when, you know, there's a bunch of negative ads out there. So.
So, uh, we're going a little bit over, um, but I'm sorry, Skylar, we just
Sorry, Skylar. I just, I got, I have a thing, like one last thing, because I, I really feel like people will like, I will be in my own head about it and I'm sure people will. So the other elephant in the room is obviously you are a white woman who is newer to the, um, neighborhood. Tamiko is a black woman who has lived in, in Sacramento and in this community for a very long time. Oak Park is a historically black neighborhood, um, that is incredibly important to people in the black community. And I grew up in a historically black neighborhood in Pittsburgh, the Hill District where August Wilson wrote a Century series. I gotta say that every time I talk about Pittsburgh. So I, I, I know how much that means to people. And I know how concerned people are about the demographics of Oak Park changing, um, and about what this means. And I know one of the things that a lot of people are grappling with um, is, you know, how do we choose between these two candidates? Um, and what does it mean if for the first time in a very long time, because Jay has represented the district, there is this black woman who's running, um, and we choose a white woman who's new to this district. Um, and so I'm, I'm really curious what you would say to people who are having those concerns. Um, and yeah, and I think that's, that's probably my question.
Yeah, that's good. And that's real. Well, I would say, um, one, I've lived in Sacramento for almost my entire life. Um, I wasn't born here. My dad was in the military, but I've lived in, like in Sacramento since I was eight or nine years old. Um, you know, and so like, I've also lived all around in different districts because I was a runner for a really long time. That's the experience that a lot of people have, um, moving around. So I always make that, I think that my experience is actually really, um, something that a lot of people Sacramento's have experienced. You're not, you don't, most of the time have it lived in one district or one neighborhood your entire life. Some people do and that's great. Um, I know that Tamiko's also moved around, um, as well. Um, and I've also previously lived in District Five before I moved out and then moved back and then um, and a big part of the reason why I moved to Oak Park is also because my sister and her husband live there. So they've lived off of, right across from Sacai for, I think like five or six years now. And then before that, they lived off of Broadway and MLK. Um, but like very valid criticism, you know, like absolutely. And I think that one of the things that I hear the most, especially about neighborhoods like Oak Park is gentrification, the wholesale changeover of neighborhoods, the rising cost of housing, the new amenities that are coming in and people not being able to experience them because they're being displaced. We've seen, this was in, you know, CAP Radio and Taxi did articles on this, is this the wholesale um, change of the neighborhood and, and especially black residents being priced out and having to leave. And so what I would say is, you know, I, I feel like my policy platform, the things that I'm talking about, those things that directly address those issues, right? Talking about rent control, tenant protection, talking about pathways to homeownership. Um, talk about first, things like first fight refusal, investing in community land trust, like all of these things that are ways that we, mechanisms that we can use to try to keep people in their homes, allow them the ability to stay in their neighborhoods. And I think a lot of people in Oak Park, um, I'm not, I might, I haven't looked at the data, but if you look at how people voted in Oak Park in the primary, I think I won a lot of those precincts overwhelmingly. Um, and I think that's because the message that I'm talking about is what's, what's resonating with people from a policy perspective. Um, and also people have seen me out in the community. And so like, so I was, I was the vice president of Oak Park Neighborhood Association. We helped start a program called Oak Park Care, which, um, I personally fundraised $5,000 for and we gave out grants to, to community members in need who were like struggling behind on their rent. So I think it's like this balance. So I think it's like this balance of, you know, I understand that I don't like look the way that some people think that might be like the better fit for the district. And the district is really, really big and diverse. People like think of it as a park district, but it actually goes really far south. So it's Oak Park and it crosses over on Sutterville and then it's all of like North City Farms, South City Farms, Carlton Track, Hollywood Park, Parkway Estates, and parts of Meadowview got picked up from the South Bend. And, and the largest block of like demographically is Latino, 40% Latino district. And so there's, there's just a lot of difference, there's a difference in the neighborhoods. And I think that that's why also another thing that I talk about a lot is, I have just my one perspective, I'm not going to know everything. One, talking to the experts, but two, I want to create what's called a community council or community cabinet, like day one, where it's representatives from every neighborhood, from different ethnic groups, different abilities, different languages, you name it. And nonprofits and small business owners and make sure that like everyone's at this table and in the room. So that we're talking about policy before it ever even gets on the agenda. So that I, you know, people can alert me and say, hey, like this is going to impact my community, my neighborhood and we can talk about that too. So I'm definitely going to make every effort possible to ensure that everyone's at the table because I can't know everything and I'm not going to pretend to.
Flo, do you have a response before I have to round it out?
No, I'm going to let you round it out. I think that was a good note to end with.
Awesome. Katie, can you tell us, folks listening, they're like, oh wow, Katie Maple, sounds pretty good. I want to help her. I want her to get into office. What can I do?
Well, there's a few things you can do. So first and foremost, you can go on my website, katiemapple.com, K-A-I-T-Y-M-A-P-L-E.com, C-O-M. And there is a donate button on there. So if you're not a developer or oil and gas tycoon, feel free to donate. If you can. If you can't, we have volunteer opportunities every single day and every weekend. So letter writing campaigns, if you don't want to come out of your house, text banking, phone banking and canvassing every single weekend. And it's soon to be 32 days until the election. So if you can do that stuff, that would be really great.
Very cool. I know that you've got a big push on Sunday as well, that got people knocking on doors, right?
Saturday, so Saturday, Councilwoman Valenzuela and SCIU 2015, and coming out with a bunch of people. And then we're also having a community barbecue at McCroky Park afterwards. So folks want to come out and just eat food and get to know me more, they can do that. If you want to come out and knock on doors and then eat food and get to know me, they can also do that.
What time's the food?
The food's at one.
Gotta let the folks know that. Cool. Katie, thank you so much for coming on. This was very fun. Got a little spicy. I like a little spice. I'm glad we finally got to get you on though. And, and yeah, let's just see how this goes in the next month.
And I'd be happy to come back, no matter the outcome.
Awesome. I mean, we'll find a way for you to come back, yeah. But just for folks who want to keep following Voices River City, I guess you know all the things that we're on. Do I need to do it? Do I? I don't know.
Do it.
Is Skylar going to yell at me if I don't?
Maybe.
We have, we have like a store, voicesrivercity.com/shop, where you can get like a White Claw koozie or a t-shirt or a sticker. We have an event coming up on Friday, October 14th. It's only for patrons, so you have to become a patron at patron.com/voicesrivercity. But please do, we want to hang with you. Those of you we already know, like, we fucking like you and like, we hope you come out. And yeah, I guess that's it. That's our show. Thank you so much, Katie, for coming on today. And, and yeah, let's, one month, the, the ballots drop in, in, in six day, five days, once we publish.
Five days, yeah.
Yep.
Who's counting?
I know, right? All right.
I just, I'm just waiting for the attack ads, if they're going to come out, if they'll come out in the next few days.
God, that would stress me out so much.
They're just so comical, it's hard not to laugh at them.
This is, yeah, I want Flo to run for office just so I can like put them up on my wall, like all of her time. All right, well, what a wonderful show. We will talk to you all later and.